Okay, let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, bigger God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay. All right, it has been a month since we met and I was, planned to remember some of the longtime Madison residents who passed over the, over this time, but tonight I will spend time remembering an incredible man, Carmen Toto Jr. Before I talk about Carmen, I do want to pass our condolences on to our electric department foreman, Dave Argler, and his family, Dave's mother Alice, longtime Madison resident, passed away on August 22nd at the age of 90. Our thoughts with Dave and his family at this difficult time. But yesterday, with his family at his side, Carmen Toto Jr. died at the age of 76. Madison lost a great man, whose work and dedication will be felt for years to come. I was honored to visit with the Toto family on Friday to present a proclamation in the Mayor's Hero Award. Carmen was resting at that time, so I was not able to present it correctly to him. Let me just share the proclamation, some other thoughts. Whereas Carmen Toto Jr., lifelong Madison resident, is easily recognized from a distance from his signature fedora. Whereas it was Carmen worked, while Carmen worked with his father Carmen Toto Sr. in her painting restoration business, that he learned the importance of giving back to your community. And whereas, as a specialist in architectural preservation and a multi-term member of our Historic Preservation Commission, Carmen has been active in his efforts to preserve the borough's history. Whereas some of Carmen's work in Madison includes painting several historic buildings on Main Street with historical accuracy and rebuilding the hands and numbers on the Museum of Early Trades and Crafts clock at the James Library, which dates back to 1899. Whereas Carmen received many accolades, including being named Man of the Year by Unico, Citizen of the Year by the Madison Chamber, and Craftsman of the Year by Museum of Early Trades and Crafts. And whereas Carmen and his family use their love of playing bati, raise money for various wellness programs for the community by sponsoring the annual YMCA bati tournament. And whereas for over 40 years, Carmen and his wife Marie, his children and their families have been the caretakers for Madison's Christmas parade, which was the first of its kind in New Jersey. And whereas the Toto family is responsible for producing and setting up the Santa Village on Kings Road, which is visited and enjoyed by people from near and far. And whereas Carmen was the first Madison Chamber of Commerce Hall of Fame Award Honorary for his outstanding achievements and willingness to go above and beyond for the town of Madison. And whereas Carmen enjoys nothing more than a home-cooked Italian meal along with a glass of Villa Rose wine that's produced on their property, while in the company of family and friends. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, extends serious thanks and appreciation to Carmen Toto Jr. for his generosity, expertise, and many years of volunteerism on behalf of the Borough of Madison. I presented him with the Mayor's Heroes Award, which was engraved with this, "For his lifelong commitment to both preserving Madison's history and making it a better place to live." And to say that he made Madison a better place to live is an understatement. Many who came to town for the Christmas parade and to view the Christmas village had no idea the work and dedication that went into it all. For all they knew, it was a Christmas miracle, and a miracle it was, but it was a miracle called Carmen Toto. Carmen received so many awards over the years, which probably drove this modest man so crazy. He did none of this work for personal recognition, it was all for others. His biggest award was to see the smiles of the children, smiles on the faces of all the children that came to visit the Santa Village and the parade. While he did none of this for recognition, I do know that of his many awards, he was very proud of the Museum of Early Trades Craftsman of the Year Award. And I will believe he was so proud of it because he is a true craftsman, as his father thought him to be. Approach every task with detail and a touch of artistry. We saw that at the Christmas Village, and with the parade, a true craftsman would continually think how to make it even better. His work in the parade and village was just the most visible part of his generosity. He gave in so many ways, was always ready to support all of Madison. Carmen is survived by his beloved wife, for 54 years, Marie, and his daughter Emery Toto Travranek, and her husband Alan of Toby Hanna, his two sons Carmen Toto III and his wife Christina of Madison, Michael Toto and his wife Heather of Madison, his two brothers James and Salvador, his cherished grandchildren Olivia Rose, Carmen Joseph, Tyler Michael, Jake Riggs, Haley and Haley Grace, and loving nieces and nephews, numerous cousins and dear friends. And of course, he leaves behind the 16,000 residents of Madison of the town he loved so much. I have directed the flags of the Madison Borough to be flown at half-staff through the day of its services this Friday. And visitation to celebrate Carmen's life will be from 3:00 to 8:00 on this Thursday at September 16th at Madison Memorial Home. And the Liturgy of Christian Burial will be celebrated for Carmen at 10:00 a.m. Friday, September 17th at St. Vincent Martyr Church. And for those that wish, you can also attend virtually by live stream, because the church will be filled. And that is by going to svmnj.org, or of course, just search St. Vincent Martyr. Let us take a moment to remember Carmen Toto Jr. And now let us pass our thoughts on to Toto family, friends, all the Madison residents that were touched by Carmen's dedication and love. Thank you. I have a motion for the executive minutes of August 9, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion for the regular minutes of August 9, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections or changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Welcome all. And this is a tough transition from recognition to such a great man, but I'll miss him. As you know, that we had planned to be act live for the September meeting, and here we are still virtually, because even though, or at the end of our August break, Labor Day is behind us, and it appears that summer is here, and so is the spread of COVID, especially with the Delta variant, so that it puts us back, we will continue at least through September. And we will assess returning into in-person in October. And certainly, it is our goal to do that sooner or later, but our priority is always the safety of our residents. And I'm looking forward to being back in person instead of sitting in the front of this empty room. And so in the meantime, before we get back to in-person, please protect yourself by wearing a mask when indoors and social distancing cannot be maintained. And if you're not vaccinated, please take care of it now, so you can care for yourself and your loved ones. And we've had a bit of weather with the remnants of Ida passing through, and I'm sure in some of the liaison reports, we'll hear a little bit more about the effort in the days after Ida. Many in Madison had to have their basements pumped out, but we fared much better than many communities. Our DPW Electric Department were able to assist the recoveries in Millburn and other towns. Our thoughts are now with those in Louisiana and many other New Jersey neighborhoods that were severely impacted by yet another storm and on a long road to recovery. And this past Saturday, we gathered at James Park and the 9/11 memorial in remembrance of September 11th, 2001, 20 years ago. I want to thank all those who attended and supported the event, and special thanks to the Bangler family and Borough's Empore and Bangler Funeral Home for their support with the event, including the Bugler Bagpipers and the flag that was carried through the town. I also attended the recognition that evening in Chatham Borough for the 13 who died in both Chatham's, and another very moving remembrance. And as we said Saturday, and we'll say many times, we shall never forget. And to announce our employees of the month for September, Patrolman Patrick Trifachi from the Police Department has been selected for employee of the month. And on August 14th, some police received a 911 call regarding a man who had collapsed on the sidewalk on Main Street. Patrolman Trifachi was nearby and arrived within seconds. He assessed the patient, notified the Madison Dispatch, and began to performing life-saving measures with the help of RN, who was passing by, and Morris County EMS and Fire Department. The 53-year-old Madison resident was resuscitated, transported to the hospital to complete his recovery. And Patrick's quick actions and coordination resources led to a successful outcome. And anniversary for the month of September, on September 10th, our school crossing guard Hadved Mirislav celebrated his 20th anniversary with the borough. That's a lot of crossing of students over 20 years. We just, our proclamations ready, and we will bring up Elizabetha Ariah and maybe a few other Interact members.
Hi.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us.
And thank you for all your work on the Interact Club and supporting those in need. So I've got a proclamation to present to you. Whereas Interact Clubs are an important branch, the Rotary Organization, which encourages students to focus on service above self through community service projects. And whereas in 2020, Madison High School Interact Club came together with Madison Rotary to develop a plan to support families struggling during the pandemic. And whereas the Interact Club, connected with Pastor Dunn from the Madison First Baptist Church, confirmed that Food Pantry at the church would be able to accept and distribute all donated food. And whereas more than 80 generous Madison families donate on a bi-monthly basis, and their donations go directly to Food Pantry at the church. And whereas, since the collection started, more than 1,700 bags of food have been donated, collected, and delivered to the pantry. And whereas, the Interact Club has also collected over $3,800 which is donated to the food pantry. And whereas, students have also organized a free in-person food collection with benefited New Jersey, participated in several Madison Rotary Packaged Food distributions. And whereas, on July 24th, 2021, the Interact Club celebrated a one-year anniversary of a food collection program. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, recognize the Madison High School Interact Club's achievements in fighting food insecurity in our community, and thank them for your dedication in this program. Let me hand this off to you.
Thank you.
There we go. Amazing how that always works. Elizabeth, thank you, and for the whole club for all your work, and please tell us a little bit about it.
Yeah, so I just want to thank all the drivers who have been a part of it, some of them are here. I want to thank the Rotary Club for supporting us a lot in this program, and to the town and all of you for supporting us, and supporting, most importantly, the people that are in need. We really thank Pastor Dunn and the First Baptist Church Food Pantry for all of their dedication to the community. It's their dedication that we, of course, recognize first, so we wanted to help them out with that. If anyone does, if anyone watching this wants to join, you can contact the Interact Club and we can help you join. For those who aren't familiar, we go to houses that sign up, we have around 80 right now. And they donate about a grocery bag full of donations of food, non-perishable foods, and we bring them to the First Baptist Food Pantry on Cook Ave. And they distribute to a lot of families in the area that are in need. We recognize the need when COVID began, but we also recognize that it continued even to now. So we wanted to make an impact, and we really thank everyone who's supported us. We feel it's really important.
And thank you for, you really made a big impact and you're at a very difficult time helping the families. Thank you for putting service above self.
Thank you.
Take care. Bring Karen up. Oh, Carrie. Okay, hello Carrie. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
And so we have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, and appreciate you taking the time to accept this on behalf of all our residents and all those around of Hispanic heritage. Whereas, for more than 30 years, Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated across the United States. And whereas, beginning with the recognition of September 15th as Independence Day of five Central American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua, Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to honor the traditions and countless artistic, scientific, political, and cultural contributions of Madison residents who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, Puerto Rico, and the Spanish-speaking nations of Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. And whereas, as of 2020, the U.S. Census estimates that Hispanic Americans comprise 18.7% of U.S. population, 22% of New Jersey's population, and 9.5% of Madison's population. And whereas, Hispanic Americans have fought in every war since the Revolutionary War, and 60 Hispanic Americans have received a Congressional Medal of Honor, our nation's highest military award for valor in the action against enemy force. And whereas, Hispanic Americans fuel our economy through entrepreneurship, I'm tough with big words today, and continued contributions to the industry, the arts, and agriculture, civil society, academia, healthcare services, and more. And whereas, we appreciate and honor the countless achievements of our Hispanic neighbors and continue our efforts to ensure that Madison is a welcoming and inclusive community. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim September 15th, 2021 through October 15th, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month, and recognize the cultural heritage, collective resilience, and countless contributions of Hispanic Americans to Madison. There you go, Carrie. If you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you so much. On behalf of the Hispanic community, a very diverse and very special community, I thank you. I'm very proud to be a part of America's melting pot. And I am very grateful to live in a town that is committed to not only celebrating, but to welcoming diversity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carrie. And now we'll bring up Karen.
Hello.
Hello Karen. Welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight, and appreciate you accepting this. And our thoughts are with you as we bring awareness to a very important topic. Whereas, September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us in our community. The simple goal is to learn on how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. Whereas, the Borough of Madison is committed to increasing the awareness of suicide prevention, and which is to recognize the importance of suicide awareness in our community. Whereas, suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. Whereas, according to CDC, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide. And whereas, suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the United States, and the 2nd leading cause of death among those aged 10 to 24. And whereas, the Borough of Madison is no different than any other community in this country, but chooses to publicly state and our place, and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, pack leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas, local organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, are on the front lines of the battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo of a topic to speak on. And whereas, every member of community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need occasional reminder that we are silently fighting our own battles. And whereas, we encourage all residents to take time to check in with their families, friends, and neighbors to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, or a hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now, therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby proclaim September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, Borough of Madison. Present this to you, Karen, and if you want to say a few words.
Thank you, Bob. Last year, when I accepted this proclamation, I never even imagined there would be so many more deaths on the Morris X-6 train line in just over a year. I've learned a lot this past year about suicide, not just the facts and figures, but the aftermath of it all. I've taken an active role and tried to educate others on this horrible way to end one's life. I'm proud to live and have raised my children in such a stigma-free town that realizes the importance of mental health. I was very touched when the wrestling team decided to have their coaches and wrestlers under CJ with a special remembrance of their uniforms and fundraising efforts. I was also happy to participate in the Stomp Out Sigma Walk sponsored by the Rotary District 7475, and then the upcoming walk in Chatham this Saturday. Last year, it was virtual, so it could be excited that it's live. The amount of money that has been donated by many Madisonians towards AFSP has been very generous and encouraging. I'll continue to try and help others who may be facing this tragedy and/or trying to avoid it as long as I live. I pray each night that nobody has to face this horrendous outcome. Stay safe and stay strong, everyone, but most of all, just stay.
Thank you, Karen. Very well said. And the Outer Darkest Walk this Saturday, registration starts at 4 o'clock, and the walk starts and ceremony starts at 5:00 p.m., I believe, and you can find the information online. And I encourage residents to sign up and join together, that's how we can find it. And I also encourage those that have an opportunity to take mental health first aid, which I have taken, and it's a very difficult course, but it gives people the tools to help those in need, because it is no different than any other ailment, and we can save people if we take the right steps. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
And we now move on to reports from committees. Public Safety Council President Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Fire Department, during the month of August, the Fire Department responded to 19 general alarms, 20 still alarms, 33 investigations, and 38 EMS calls. On Tuesday, August 17th, around 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., the Fire Department responded to a structure fire at 265 Kings Road in Madison. The fire was called in by off-duty police Captain Joe Longo. While it moved to the call, it was reported the occupant of the house was still inside. With smoke and flames pushing out the rear door of the house, three Madison firefighters entered with a charged hose line to start extinguishing the fire and to search the occupant. Minutes later, the occupant was found on the first floor, unconscious. Firefighters radioed, they're fine, and they were unable to get to the door where they had made entry. They removed the window and handed out, the occupant was handed out through the window and worked on by EMS, police paramedics, and later transported to the hospital. Madison firefighters exited the window to safety while other firefighters continued to extinguish the fire. On Wednesday evening, September 1st, Ida hit our area. Madison firefighters pumped out over 70 basements that were flooded and responded to a three-alarm activation over a 22-hour period. Late in the afternoon on September 2nd, Madison Administrator Ray Cody contacted Chief DeRosa with a request from Millburn for any portable pumps. Chief DeRosa contacted the Millburn Fire Department, they were loaned three large gasoline trash pumps and two large electric pumps. All pumps were returned on Saturday, September 4th. Engine 2 has been out of service since August 23rd, her fire pump is being rebuilt. Parts are ordered, and she should be back in service in two to four weeks. On Friday, September 10th, Madison was requested along with other departments to respond to a Chatham Township residential structure fire. Today, and then today, at approximately 7:54 a.m., the Fire Department was dispatched to a reported structure fire. As a caller reported, seeing smoke coming from the roof of the apartment complex located at 292 Main Street. A fire was found in the attic above a second-floor apartment. A hand line was stretched, and the ceiling in the bedroom had been pulled down to extinguish the fire. There were no injuries, and the fire is not suspicious. And from the Police Department, the Madison Police Department purchased 120 stuffed police dogs to donate to Robert Wood Johnson Barnabas Pediatric Burn Unit, and for patrol officers to provide to children at medical and other service calls. The idea became known after Patrolman Mentone, whose fiancee Kimberly, who works on the unit, advised the hospital is always in need of donations for children. Corporal Aquino took the lead and organized the project, anything to put a smile on a child's face. Acting Chief Misha graduated August 2nd from the 496th Class of Northwestern University School, the Police Staff in Command. Acting Chief Misha was among 24 graduates who completed the 23 weeks of training. The course is nationally recognized as the premier leadership program, and some study topics include leadership, human resources, budgeting and resource allocation, applied statistics, and employee relations. And members of the Madison Police Department joined Mayor Conley and members of the Borough Government, along with the Madison Fire Department and Madison Ambulance, at the 20th anniversary ceremony of the September 11th attacks. The memorial ceremony was held at Madison 9/11 Memorial at James Park. And finally, on Saturday, September 18th, members of the Madison Police Department and its Community Relations Unit will join forces with Madison First Baptist Church in holding a block party held behind the Civic Center at 28 Walnut Street. The event will be held from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and this event reflects the strong relationship between both organizations. Tune up, you'll be able to see our own Mayor Conley manning the grill. Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, and I'm getting my baton ready as we speak. And Finance Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. First, a reminder from the tax collector to our residents that the senior freeze application deadline is November 1st. Any seniors who have not done so should bring their forms into the tax office by November 1st. And I want to congratulate Tax Collector Chrissy Mahler for two things. First, she held the annual tax sale last week. She did a great job. There's only one parcel that had unpaid taxes that went on tax sale. As a reminder to our residents, if a property owner has not paid their taxes from the prior year, then the borough holds a tax sale and sells the liability to a third party. The borough is not a bank and cannot permit tax liability to accrue on our books for multiple years. So the third party paid the borough the remaining 2020 taxes on the particular property, and now they will work directly with the property owner to resolve the issue. And I also want to thank Chrissy Mahler and Hattie Evans from the Tax Collector's Office for doing a great job collecting taxes this year. Our collection rate for the third quarter 2021 is over 97.5%, so we really appreciate all their hard work. Then from the Finance Department, this Wednesday, the borough will be wiring approximately $4 million to the Board of Education. This is the monthly amount that is required to cover their operations and debt. Budget season is here again. It's hard to believe, but the budget season is here. Next week, the administration will start meeting with the various department heads to review their operating budgets. And this is the first step And this is the first step in building the budget. Then the department head's goal, they've been asked to keep their budgets flat for twenty twenty-two. And in addition to the operating budget, the administration is working with the Borough Engineer and the department heads on the five-year capital plan. And we're going to hope to have a presentation on this by the end of the year. And we've invested over thirty million dollars in the last five years maintaining, improving our roads, critical infrastructure and utility assets. But this year, we're going to have a significant challenge with capital spending as we may have to defer some road repairs in order to complete other important projects, and this is partly due to our COVID situation. And then the Chief Financial Officer has been working with the Personnel Director Sandy Emmerich on the various salary schedules for the budget. Almost half of the municipal budget is salary, so it is important to make sure all the salary information in the budget is correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys hear me? From the Engineering Department, Marilyn Garaguso has removed, reformed, reinforced, and repoured the upper, lower, and east wing stair foundations out front, approximately a hundred cubic yards of concrete. The next phase of construction will involve resetting granite stair treads on the upper stair foundations in a sand and mortar base. Then the upper, then the upper plaza granite will be reset. Sofeli General Construction Construction has now completed the road reconstruction sidewalk, striping, topsoil, and seed on both Anthony and Wayne Boulevard. Miscellaneous sidewalks replacements around Madison continue this month. Paver resets downtown and several driveway aprons have been improved in the central business district. AC Schultz mobilized on July fifteenth and provided a crane at the Well AB Treatment Facility to remove the pump and mortar. The company successfully transported the pump to their facility, completed the rebuilding process, and reinstated the vertical turbine pump in accordance with the contract. Montana Construction mobilized for an emergency response to debris buildup in the culvert between Keep Street and the Kings Road Act across the from the YMCA and the New Jersey Transit Rail properties. Initial debris removal has been completed and coordination with New Jersey Transit Rail is in progress. Matina and Sons Construction mobilized for an emergency response to a broken water valve adjoining the Kirby Center and completed work within twenty-four hours. DPW, DPW prepared for potential flooding ahead of Tropical Storm Ida by clearing storm drains and ensuring culvert openings were cleared of any debris. After the storm passed, they responded to multiple storm-related issues. Many large branches were removed from storm drains and a managed culvert assessed and coned off for safety until it can be repaired. Last week, DPW assisted Milburn, which was highly affected by Tropical Storm Ida, by supplying them with an employee and truck to assist in the removal of storm debris from residences and businesses. The DPW Sewer Division will begin their quarterly jetting of low-lying areas this week of September twentieth. Notification to areas that are affected will be sent ahead of time. In addition to servicing and returning to service police and electrical department vehicles, the mechanics also made emergency repairs to the senior services bus and also set up the new gum buster for downtown sidewalks. Training on the gum buster is currently taking place, and you will see it downtown cleaning our sidewalks very soon. The Parks Department maintained and restored fields and basketball courts from debris following Tropical Storm Ida. They also painted lines for football and Dodge Field on Dodge Field. Mulching and weeding took place in all borough parking lots as well as some downtown tree wells that needed attention. From the Shetree Management Board, based on unmet resident requests, plans are in place to have the Department of Public Works plant fourteen additional trees in October. Shetree Management Board members have completed a survey of all Madison street trees and has a current list of trees that need to be removed, pruned, and potential two thousand twenty-two planting spots. Resident who would like a new street tree in two thousand twenty-two should please call the Department of Public Works. As a result of the recent heavy rainfall, residents are reminded that trees help control water, drainage decreases soil erosion, and assists groundwater recharge. Please plant and care for your trees. For the excuse me, one second. For the Recreation Department, purchase orders where we see have been issued and work is officially scheduled to begin at the Rosedale Baseball Field this week. First, Dean's Greens will fully top dress and steed both outfield to address any lower uneven spots and fill out the grass. Then sometime in October, Advanced Landscaping will be on-site to fully regrade and repair the Sunny Vitality infield. Both of these projects should significantly enhance the drainage and playability of the Rosedale baseball fields after a stretch of very challenging weather this spring and summer. As all of our fall seasons are officially underway and outdoor sports have been mostly turned to fall and complete schedules. Along these same lines, the Madison Soccer Club will host the Pride Soccer Tournament at the MRC this Columbus Day weekend, and Madison Junior Field Hockey will host their postseason tournament at the MRC on November twentieth and twenty-first. Additionally, Madison Junior Football will host their first Morris County Youth Football League games the weekend of September twenty-sixth. In the process of planning and evaluating with regard to the winter sports schedule, please keep an eye on the recreation page of Rosenet as updates will be published as soon as they are available. From the Environmental Commission, yesterday's Eco Garden Tour was a tremendous success. Hundred and ninety people registered, primarily Madison residents, but also visitors, visitors from sixteen neighboring towns. They visited eight different locations in Madison, including pollinator gardens, rain gardens, vegetable gardens, and a master gardener's chemical-free lawn, plus six booths with guests, experts, such as the Friends of Madison Shetree and the Great Swamp Watershed Association. Garden hosts report that visitors were very engaged and eager to learn more about native plants and trees, composting, organic gardening, raising chickens, and non-toxic lawn care practices. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. And Community Affairs, Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. Please continue to patronize the farmers market every Thursday at Dodge Field. After Ida, there were a couple of farms that did not make it, but everybody's coming back, was back this week, and the rest will be back soon. So please, it goes through the end of November, or through the middle of November, I apologize. And a reminder that Bottle Hill Day is coming up on October second. Looking to be hopefully a great weather day, but looking to be kind of back to normal, which will be be nice. But please be aware that we are, due to COVID and Delta, not going to be having the beer garden this year. So just want to start to get that word out, but Bottle Hill Day itself will be happening, the car show will be happening. You know, and we look forward to a great day. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Utilities, Ms. Ehrlich.
Thank you, Mayor. From the Electric Department, as we all know, on Wednesday, September first, and Thursday, the second, Tropical Storm Ida hit Madison. The Electric Department is pleased to announce that we had no power outages caused by the storm. On Thursday, the department drove the lines to inspect for damage and found that the lines had sustained no damage, although they did have to remove branches from the lines and cut back a tree on Danforth that had blown over and was leaning on the primary line. Following the storm from Friday, September third through Sunday, the fifth, the Madison Electric Department offered JCPN mutual aid to assist with power outages. The crews worked in Burnsville, Harding, Morristown, and Summit, setting utility poles and hanging wire. Aside from the storm response, in the last month, there were three callouts to the standby crew for power, no power, low power, and one emergency mark out. In addition to the trouble calls, the department continues to complete daily work orders, including new service installations and disconnects, as well as meeting with contractors to discuss electrical layouts, materials, specs, and design. The Water Department reports that the installation of new water meters with automated readers is ongoing. If anyone outside of the Madison Commons neighborhood is interested in having their water meter updated, please call the Madison Water Department at nine seven three nine six six seven three three zero to schedule an appointment. The Madison Water Department's annual fire hydrant and water main flushing program will begin within the week and is estimated to last six weeks. While hydrant flushing typically will not interrupt water service, residents may notice a temporary drop in water pressure while crews are working in the area. There's also the possibility that water may become temporarily discolored. This is normal, and discolored water does not pose a health hazard. If discolored water occurs, simply run the cold water for a few minutes until it clears. That's all for utilities.
Thank you. And Health, Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two separate reports, and I first help, then second as OEM Coordinator. In regards to health, since September first, fourteen confirmed cases of COVID have been reported in Madison, with three of these being people who are fully vaccinated. The variant is still the predominant form of COVID in this area. Individuals with certain medical conditions or who are immune compromised may be eligible for a third dose of the vaccine. They're asked to check with their healthcare providers. Booster shots have not yet been approved, but that information will be forthcoming. In addition to COVID, plans are underway at the Madison Health Department for the annual flu clinics. Information will be forthcoming on that as well. In regards to Ida, New Jersey was just added to the federal list of states under the Disaster Declaration for the Remnants of Ida. With that, FEMA will have representatives out in the field to talk to families. Now, I have to find out from FEMA exactly what that means. Is this just individuals whose basements were flooded? Is there a minimum amount of money that's going to be required? As I get more information on that, I'll get that out to the residents. In regards to Ida as well, working with the borough departments, I was able to submit to FEMA a reimbursement request for over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I will be negotiating with FEMA and the county to see how much of that will get back, because FEMA puts that through a whole formula, a whole review process. So there'll be more information coming, but in particular, I want to find out more about what they're going to do for individual homeowners in this area. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And it was a bit of catching up after our summer break. Now we're on to next communications and visions.
Yes, Mayor, council received two emails, one dated August the twenty-seventh from Catherine Van Mullen of posterior court regarding property maintenance at one sixty Madison Avenue, and another email dated September the second from Mary Ann Olivieri thanking the Madison Fire Department for all their efforts cleaning, helping her with flooding at her home due to Ida.
All right, thank you. And now we're on to invitation for discussion. This is a first of two. This one is limited to our agenda discussions and our resolutions. If you want to comment on other topics, we will have that after the ordinances for hearing. So please hold those topics. These are the things you can comment on. We are going to have a presentation on the Affordable Housing Project, which will be going in on Walnut Street and Community Place. And these are the ordinance or the resolutions that are part of the consent, and you can comment on any of these. And this will also make you aware of what's in the consent agenda, Resolution two thirty, Resolution determining need for affordable housing project. And this is one of the things we need to tick off for our settlement for Fair Share Housing, and this determines that there's a forty-four unit affordable housing project that will meet or will meet existing housing needs, and that has already been determined. And this will allows them to go for funding to finance the project. Resolution two thirty-one is authorizing contracts to real supply under Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council for water, water meter data recorders and radio frequency meter interface units. Resolution two thirty-two is authorizing renewal agreement employment assistance program with Atlantic Health System. Resolution two thirty-three is ratifying the appointment of intern Christian Mettinger as a part-time unpaid intern for the Police Department. Resolution two thirty-four is appointing Mother Susan Ironside of Grace Church as Police Chaplain for the Madison Police Department. Resolution two thirty-five is authorizing use of spaces in public parking lot for the Civic Center for the First Baptist Church of Madison on September eighteenth. You heard that in the report earlier, Public's invited to the block party. Resolution two thirty-six is authorizing the thirty-sixth annual Draw the Farms Run on Sunday, September, November, Sunday, November fourteenth. Resolution two thirty-seven is authorizing superhero events to hold a ten-mile run at Draw the Farms on Sunday, October thirty-first, and this is Draw the Farms is part of the ten miles. Resolution two thirty-eight is resolution approving special permit for the horsches and pizza to be held on Kings Road on September twenty-fourth hosted by Sunday Motor Company. Resolution two thirty-nine is authorizing Jewish Federation of Greater Metro West Bike Ride on the October tenth. This will be passing through town. Resolution two forty is approving renewal application for livery owners licensed for travelers taxi and limousine. Resolution two forty-one approving raffle license for Madison Rotary Club Foundation. Resolution ages are sticking. Resolution two forty-two is approving raffle license for Garden Club of Madison. Resolution two forty-three is approving community pool parking lot for use by the Cub Scout Pack two twenty-six on September thirteenth. That was today. Resolution two forty-four authorizing contract of up to fifty thousand dollars to Montana Construction for storm tour repairs completed on emergency basis on Keep Street, and that was part of John Hoover's report on the culvert that runs under the YMCA field. Resolution two forty-five, Resolution of Borough of Madison approving raffle license applications for the PTO of Torrey J Sabatini School. Resolution two forty-six is approving temporary signage for American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. And so those are the consent agenda. You can comment on any of those resolutions or the affordable housing projects on Walnut and Community. If you wish to comment on those, please raise your hand now by clicking on the hand. As soon as you're recognized, please state your name, your address, and immediately state the agenda item you are addressing. Again, if it's not one of the agenda items, you can come back a little bit later to address any topic. And Tom, we will bring you up.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me speak for a second. I just have a question about, oh, Tom Harlanputus, twenty-seven Palmeroy Road. Resolution two thirty-three, twenty twenty-one, ratifying the appointment of your intern Christian Redinger. Is he slated to be a police officer in the future, or is he serving the borough in a different capacity, working for the Police Department? I know that there's going to be a need for replacing some retired police officers. And just chattering on that, Mayor. Nothing else to comment on because I don't know what the presentation is going to be like for the affordable housing project. So I guess I'll have to wait till after we hear that. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tom. And I do recognize it's tough to comment on something that we haven't presented yet, but that'll, will be plenty of opportunities. The internship, as like most internships, it gives students and young adults a chance to get experience in different areas. Sometimes it becomes a training ground for a, because they thought it's a career they want to get involved in. And sometimes it's a training ground to tell them that I didn't want that career. So this is not necessarily a future officer, but it's certainly a great support to the Police Department and a great opportunity for the student to learn about public safety and other aspects. And seeing no other hands raised, I close this part of the meeting, and we now move on to our agenda discussion, the Affordable Housing Presentation, and we will be promoting a few people to the panel. So please bear with us as we bring them up. I think Joaquin has raised his hand to be promoted and not a commenting, so we will promote Joaquin. not commenting. So we will promote uh, Joaquin um. And if we can get uh, Joe Portello promoted and then we can uh, be very clear of anyone else that needs to be uh.
It should be Michael Hong and.
Mi- mi- Michael is uh, promoted. Welcome, Michael.
Hi, good afternoon or good night, I guess.
Yes. Kevin, yeah.
Kevin Shelley. Yeah, there we go.
Evening.
Good evening. Okay, I guess I'll get started. Hi, my name is Michael Hong and I am.
Ju- ju- just one second, Michael. Just uh, John Carlton has a hand up. Is he part of or not?
Yes, so he, he's, he's on standby in case there's questions that come up. So.
What we'll do is we'll promote him now. So he is uh, ready to, to answer.
Yes.
Okay. All right, go, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, uh, my name is Michael Hong and I am VP of Development at RPM Development Group. And just to give you an overview of the agenda today, I'm going to give a brief introduction to RPM and a little history on the project. And then I will hand it off to Kevin Shelley of Shorepoint Engineering to walk everyone through the rendered site plans we have for you today. And Joaquin Bosas of Engleis Architecture and Engineering will walk you through the architectural details of the development concept. Um, to get things started, oh, as you know, Joe Portelli, VP of Development at RPM is also with us along with John Carlton of Carlton Design. To get things started, uh, RPM, we've been in the business since nineteen eighty-six and uh, we have over four thousand units of affordable housing in our project, in our portfolio. Uh, we've amassed eleven awards of Governors Awards of Housing Excellence. And our property management group has received multiple awards of housing management, um, excellence in housing management from the New Jersey Housing and Morgan's Finance Agency. So we've been at this for a while and we are, affordable housing has been uh, our core bread and butter from the beginning. So uh, over thirty years of experience has given us a lot of knowledge and skill set to um, get affordable housing built in the state. Um, we are a full-service firm, which means we have development, contracting, leasing and property management all under one roof. This really gives us a unique ability uh, to ensure that we have a step in every process along the way from construction to long-term property management. And uh, a, a big part of our approach to development is environmental sustainability. Uh, w- we have forty-three buildings in our portfolio that are either lead platinum, lead gold, lead silver or climate choice certified in the state of New Jersey. And we also proudly retain the title, the first multifamily lead platinum building in the state and also the first net zero multifamily building. And net zero, for those of you that aren't familiar, essentially is through the combination of the use of high efficiency materials, HVAC systems and uh, onsite generation of electricity through solar panels. We essentially create all the energy needs for the development onsite, so we don't have to necessarily pull from the grid. So we're really proud of that. It's given us a lot of experience in uh, sustainable, sustainability and green uh, construction. And that is uh, a big part of all our developments in our pipeline, including, including Madison Family. And so to give you a little brief introduction to the project and our relationship, we were selected through a competitive request for proposal uh, in the spring and we were designated as developers through that process. And over the summer, we've been working very closely with borough officials, uh, Mayor Conley and Borough Administrator Ray Cody and the design committee to really refine the development concept that we're going to present to you today. Uh, so we really wanted to make sure that the concept that we developed really aligns with the values and desires of the borough. Uh, to ensure that uh, we really developed something that is a part of the community and the community is proud to have uh, in the neighborhood. So without much further ado, I'm going to hand it off to Kevin Shelley to walk you through the site plan.
Evening. Um, I am going to share a color rendering of the project if everybody can see that on my screen. Uh, first property I'm going to walk you through is the development on Walnut Street, which is currently occupied by the Borough Civic Center. Uh, development on this site um, features thirty affordable housing units within four buildings. There'll be five one-bedroom units, thirteen two-bedroom units and twelve three-bedroom units. And the site is set up so similar to the uh, configuration of the existing civic center where you have a one-way-in drive aisle and a one-way-out exit. Uh, so on the bottom of the screen on the south side of the site, we have an entrance, one-way traffic throughout the site and then an exit up on the northern side of the property. Um, there's a total of forty-five parking spaces or one and a half spaces per unit. Uh, parking for the development. Uh, but the first three buildings, buildings A, B and C, the parking is actually located underneath the building envelope. Uh, so these are covered parking spaces. Um, underneath where you see in brown, these are the residential units uh, for the ground floor located up in the front. You see the separate entrances for those units. Uh, same thing if you look at the, the middle buildings, B and C. Uh, each unit has a, uh, their own specific door uh, for access into the units. And then you have the parking located behind the buildings as well. Uh, the fourth building located in the rear of the site, building D, is an eight-unit building that has surface parking spaces located out front. Again, each unit has their own specified door uh, leading into their specific unit, whether it's a ground floor or a two-floor unit or an upstairs unit. Um, there is various outdoor uh, amenity spaces, uh, some spaces for benches or some tables, uh, some outdoor community space for the residents here, uh, sidewalks, you know, throughout the property as well. Um, and um, each building has its own designated trash enclosure area uh, for the residents to bring in. The trash will be uh, screened, hidden from view and then taken out for uh, scheduled pickups. And these are located, there's one, two, three and four enclosures for the development. So they're small enclosures, each one servicing um, the units closest to it. Uh, so it keeps everything uh, compact versus one large trash enclosure that uh, would be typical for other developments. Uh, the site will be serviced by um, water and sewer out from the street coming in from uh, Walnut Street. The site has an onsite stormwater management system that utilizes um, green infrastructure, uh, manufactured treatment devices to provide water quality. And then we have uh, underground um, pipes to create uh, storage underneath so that our system is compliant with the borough and the state's stormwater management rules. Um, initially we had talked about trying to implement some uh, rain gardens and bio-retention basins on the property. Um, and when we started uh, getting into the real design of it, uh, as you could see in some of these lawn areas, uh, we had envisioned potentially some small uh, rain gardens and bio-retention basins. Uh, there just simply wasn't enough room for us to get uh, any meaningful storage of stormwater there. So we decided uh, the best bet was to use these uh, treatment devices, um, which I can zoom in on the screen here. Um, they're essentially um, curb cuts where water flows in, there's a tree grate on top to create a, a nice finished peel from the street view. Uh, but then there's engineered soil media below that filters out the stormwater and um, allows it to be treated in accordance with the new uh, green infrastructure requirements through the state. We'll shift over to Community Place site now. The Community Place uh, portion of the development is, uh, will feature fourteen units within three buildings. There's three one-bedroom units, nine two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units. Um, there's a access drive aisle off of Community Place where there'll be again, one and a half spaces per unit located out in front of the unit, uh, in front of the buildings here. Each building has its own designated door and entryway. Um, and again, the site will be serviced by uh, existing water and sewer infrastructure out in the street as well as an underground stormwater management system to handle the increased runoff from the site. That's all I have for the, for the site portion of it. If anybody has any questions or if you want to hear the architecture first.
We'll go to the architect and then we'll take the questions and comments all, all together.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, can you hear me? Great. Um, thanks for having us tonight. Um, share my screen. Um, we just went through the site plans, Mr. Shelley. Uh, these are renderings of the proposed uh, designs. Um, this is a view uh, fronting walnut. Uh, this is the four unit with a community room on the ground floor. Uh, this is a two-story structure. Uh, we've designed the buildings to fit nicely uh, within the uh, fabric of the surrounding community um, in terms of scale and quality of design. Um, the, the base of the building is uh, brick. Uh, we have fiber cement in a variety of styles, um, wider siding and, and now we're um, siding at the second floor. We have these decorative architectural bays uh, that will also be fiber cement. Um, and we have uh, standing seam metal roof uh, over the entrances. All the windows have fiber cement trim around them and they're architecturally uh, designed in terms of of uh, proportion and um, uh, to bring quality of light and um, and air into the unit. Uh, this is a view uh, into the courtyard between buildings B and C. Here you can see some of the covered uh, porches over the uh, entrances into the units. Uh, some outdoor landscaping features and sitting areas and benches landscaping. This is a view coming in from Community Place and it shows the, the free buildings that Mr. Shelley just mentioned. Again, you can see the individual doors into the units and the porches. And then this is an aerial view. Uh, this front building in the lower left-hand corner, that's the building that would be fronting Walnut Street. And then um, uh, buildings A, B, C and D. Uh, you'll notice that um, in terms of scale, the front building, building A is a two-story. It's about twenty-two feet from uh, grade to the uh, eve of the roof. Um, and then the two middle buildings go to three stories uh, only at the ends to provide additional units uh, in those um, on those third floors. Here you'll, you can see the covered roof that was mentioned um, with the covered parking area, I'm sorry. Um, that was mentioned concealing the parking um, as, as you would drive by or, or walk through the development. Uh, and then in the distance, you have the three buildings uh, off of um, Community Place. In terms of architectural drawings, we have um, our elevations here, you can see more clearly the, the design um, and the uh, symmetry of, of the design. Uh, this is the Walnut Street building. And again, you can see that lowered area in the center. Uh, that's the community area. Um, community room, uh, the base. We have mechanical rooms on the sides of the buildings and so the electric and gas meters would be uh, concealed inside these um, closets. Uh, this is building B and here in the back, this is where that uh, roof would be covering the parking area. Building C is the same. Building D is uh, the longer building uh, based on the site. And then these are the smaller buildings um, uh, of Community Place. So on the building A of Walnut, this is that uh, community room. Uh, we have an office on that ground floor. We have a three-bedroom unit on the ground floor. Uh, here you'll notice the uh, the sprinkler room, gas meters, electric meters for these buildings. Uh, all the buildings with the sprinkler. Uh, there's that parking area with handicap uh, parking spaces adjacent to the entrance. And then as you go up to the second floor, uh, you have your bedrooms. Um, uh, full bathrooms, obviously. Um, two-bedroom unit, you could see some of these square footages. A three-bedroom is twelve hundred and two square feet. Uh, two-bedrooms, nine hundred and twenty-four square feet. Just go through building B because thereafter the buildings are typical. Um, and so here you can see all the, the entrances into the units and how we configured it is that you come in on the ground floor, you have your one-bedroom unit. Were required to provide um, ADA accessible units within the development. And so as you come in from grade, uh, you have this bathroom that's ADA accessible. Uh, you have your kitchen. And then um, the separate entrances would bring you in and up to um, the second floor where there is a two-bedroom unit. Um, and then a second two-bedroom unit because we have that three-story uh, portion at the ends of these, of these two buildings, buildings B and C. Um, you might have noticed on the renderings. Mr. Hong mentioned that this would be a um, net zero energy-ready home building. Um, and these would be um, it, they would have uh, conduits up to the roof uh, providing us an area to put some solar panels in the future. Um, and what else? I think, I think that about sums it up.
Very good. So that's a full, uh, just to give a little more background, uh, I meant to set the stage with some of these things and, and Michael did a good job of uh, talking about the process of uh, obviously as we've been going through the last couple of years of um, working towards settlement. Um, we settled on a um, what was, it's called a single site, but um, it is split, spread over two properties. Um, um, forty-four unit uh, development went through the RFP, RFQ and RFP process. And RPM was selected. We um, the design committee that was um, mentioned from representing the borough, uh, Ostry from the council, along with uh, Rachel. Um, Ostry obviously brings her many years of land use and planning board. Uh, Ra- Rachel Erlich uh, by trade is architect specializing in uh, affordable housing. Right, Carmela Vitale, who is attending the meeting Berkeley and um, we obviously couldn't let go completely. She has been serving on the committee. Uh, Dr. Susan Bickstein, our planner and Tanya Van Order on behalf of the uh, um, housing authorities have all been part of this committee along with borough staff. Um, the um, mix of um, units as far as bedrooms and all that is dictated by the settlement. So in case people are wondering why there's a certain number of single bedroom versus three-bedroom and so on. And just a few clarification for anyone was wondering what fiber cement is, it's commonly known by one of its trade product names of Hardyboard, so high-quality product, which is one of the reasons RPM was selected from our high-quality projects. I know for the council, there's a lot of information, certainly for the public. As Tom mentioned before, how can you comment on something that I haven't seen yet? This will be going to the planning board most likely October, probably November at the latest. So comments related to the site plan, the traffic and all that are more appropriate for the planning board. In fact, if anyone has questions related to that, we probably will not get into a too much of a detailed conversation because both Austria Bailey and I serve on the planning board and so we will save that discussion for them. So for those in the public and that wish to have more time, there certainly will be more time on this. So with that, any questions or comments from our council members? Maureen and Deb?
My, what lead certification are we going to be pursuing in this project?
I'll answer that. We were going for net zero energy-ready home. It is a, a step or two above Energy Star. It's a new program. And we're excited about it. We've, we've done many lead platinum buildings and, but we feel that being ready for renewables in the future is, is important. The, the buildings will still have very energy-efficient appliances and the windows and, you know, really heavily insulated. So it's it's, it's above, in, in my opinion, it's above lead certification.
And, and one of the common questions is then what do you mean by net zero already? And that is, as was pointed out, the conduit, for example, part of it would be that the solar panels may not be on roof, on the roof on day one, but the conduit built to the roof. And so at some point there could be solar panels and so when we cut the ribbon, it may not be net zero, but it is ready to be there, which would be a very impressive for a project of this type. Deb, if, if you're, was that Maureen? Okay, yep, go ahead, Deb.
And me, I don't know if all of these are necessarily appropriate for here or more for planning board. So just let me know. But first, I actually love the community rooms. I think that's a great asset to, so that people have a place kind of to hang out. In the fourth building, was there a reason that that's not covered parking and it's surface parking? Did that have to do with like impervious area and the way it had to be built because of the walnut or was it just, that's just the way it was?
There was more, there was more land to be had in, in the back and it allowed us to provide surface parking and we also had to fit a certain number of units within the footprint of the building.
Got it. And then the, the trash enclosures and again, I don't know if this is appropriate for right now, but are they locked so that only residents will be able to put stuff in them? Residents have a key or a code so that people can't just randomly dump into the, the trash areas?
Well, you would really, you would really have to come into the site in order to put garbage into those trash areas. And so the design is to really just have a, a designed shed, if you will, you know, residents can just dump their garbage in.
And, and these are not for dumpsters, which encourages dump and run, dump and run. So.
I think that was it. Thank you.
Any other, Don?
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the team, Rachel, Carmella, Austria and everybody else involved. It looks outstanding. I gotta tell you, I think it really looks terrific. And it, it should just fly through, you know, so let's, let's hope that happens. It's great. Thank you all.
And thank you for, and one of the great things of this process is our committee has come up with, you know, questions or concerns and the response from RPM on addressing those has been outstanding. And I think that's how, working together, we've come, come to what is a, gonna be incredible project that Madison will be very proud of. All right, any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much for your time, team, and we will obviously see you around. And again, for the public, obviously you're allowed to comment when it comes to comment period, but the, stay tuned for when this comes to the planning board, when you'll be able to make a comments to the, the board that makes the final say on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you all. You did a great job. Thanks.
Thank you. Take care. And now we move up, move on to ordinances for hearing. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on a first reading of the regular meeting of the council held on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. It was posted and filed according to law and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
I call up ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-one for second reading. Ask the clerk to read said ordinance title.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating seventy-five thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for professional services for Waverly Place improvements.
I open the hearing for ordinance thirty-eight. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this, please raise your hand or hit star nine. And we will bring up Tom Haverputus.
Mayor and council, thanks for having me back again. Is there going to be another opportunity later, Mayor, to just have some general?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This, this is just on this ordinance, but after we do the hearing, then we have, have even a third shot. So you can, you can go for the hat trick today.
I'm gonna just keep giving my long last name and address. Oh my, awesome. So my question on this, I, I, I was under the impression that the borough is getting some, some money from the federal government for COVID, COVID, a COVID relief grant, sizable amount of money. And that money was going to be put towards the installation of a new multifaceted radio communication system for the entire borough. And if that's correct, I'm curious to know why we're using thirty thousand dollars of the borough's money now for maybe this is the start of it. I'm not really sure. It's, it's not really very clear exactly what this entails. I'm sure it's something that the borough needs because I know that those projects are usually very well thought out and it's for public safety. But I remember reading that a lot of that money was actually being appropriated to upgrade our communication system in the borough. So if you or somebody can elaborate on that, I would appreciate just hearing what the thirty thousand dollars is actually going to cover. And I guess that's the only thing that you had read. So thank you.
And you, you jumped ahead one ordinance. So the, the ordinance we're having a hearing on is ordinance thirty-nine, which is the professional services for a landscape architect to, for the redesign of Waverly Place. This is being funded through the Borough Capital Fund and as mentioned, previous meeting, we'll, we'll bring on board the, we're going through a process right now of interviewing and we'll be coming back with a a resolution approving a professional services for this and we will clarify the, when we introduce ordinance thirty-nine, which has the video, we'll, we'll, we'll cover that. All right. Anyone else wishing to comment on ordinance thirty-eight? Seeing none, I now close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-one.
I have a second.
Any counsel discussion? Austria and then Deb. Austria, you're muted.
I, I just wanted to say we are interviewing three different firms for this project and that should be completed shortly.
Yep, thank you. And Deb?
Just a reminder that part of this is so that there will be community meetings and stakeholder meetings that's included in this. Right. So there will be input from others once we get to that point.
Yep. Any other comments? We'll call a vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Erlich?
Okay.
That was yes.
Yes.
And Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And oh, I'm gonna try to see if I can do this by memory. If I can't do it by memory now, I can never do that. I declare ordinance thirty-eight twenty twenty-one passed upon final hearing and ask the clerk to publish, notice the ordinance in accordance to the law. That's probably not word for word, but it's fairly close. And now we move on to invitations for discussion number two. This is when you may comment on any topic. And again, the same rules apply. Please raise your hand and state your name, your address. We ask you to try to keep your comments to three minutes, but we do give you a one-minute grace and we'll stop you at four minutes. And Sarah Webb?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Hi. Thank you so much. This is Sarah Webb. I live at twenty-eight Barnesdale Road in Madison, New Jersey. And I'm a forest ecologist and environmental scientist. As many of you know, I'm a retired Drew professor. I'm not representing Drew University today, only myself. I am continuing to manage the Drew Forest Preserve and Restoration Area in my retirement. And like everyone else, I was up close and personal with Hurricane Ida, which really got me thinking about the forest. Spending hours bailing water as it rose toward our front door threshold. It was kind of a wake-up call in some ways. And I want to say a few things about that. Flooding would be much worse in Madison if the Drew Forest were developed. With development, we would see buildings and pavement which completely transformed the hydrologic cycle. All of these fail to absorb rainfall and give us rapid surface runoff and flooding. Even lawns do a fairly poor job of absorbing water, turns out. So the Drew Forest was there for us during Hurricane Ida, absorbing water like a sponge, slowly releasing it, diverting it down to the earth into our Madison water supply. So with the forest, we have this water pooling on roads, less streaming along the surface funneling into our basements, less erosion to clog our sewers and more natural filtration of our pollutants. I saw something remarkable in the Drew Forest after Ida. There's a seasonal spring wetland that's dry almost all the year except in early spring. And it's not on any maps, but it's right within Hebron Woods in the heart of the Drew Forest. But here it was last week, full of water and spread out into the wooded valley, stopping the water that would have swept across the pavement if this area were developed. It was a wetland serving to hold and slowly recharge our groundwater supply. It reminds me of the forests and wetlands of the Catskill Mountains that, as you may know, New York City purchased decades ago and relies on keeping undamaged, undisturbed for their very inexpensive and pure water supply. So just to sum up or to conclude from that, I, I, it's worth thinking about how we survive a changing climate. We really need these natural lands to protect us. Another lesson comes from Hurricane Katrina without its coastal wetlands protecting it, protecting New Orleans. The damage was much worse than it would have been had they had the natural environment there. And also as the climate's warming, we need our largest trees and our most natural intact forests to naturally scrub out and store carbon from the air. This practice of preserving forests that are already established has actually got a new name called proforestation, where we protect forests that already exist. So like many of you, I hope we will be able to preserve the Drew Forest as open space. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today.
Thank you, Sarah. And thank you for the additional background, which is always very helpful. Jean Krkovia?
Okay, I'm Jean Krkovia. Current chair, I'm sorry, seventy-nine Barnesdale Road. Current chair of the Shade Tree Management Board. And to follow on what Sarah was talking about, I'd like to give you a brief update on the trees in Drew, in particular about the recent tree removals. In early August, the borough was notified of many trees being removed on the Drew campus. There was no tree removal permit on file. Rich Wallawitz, the borough's contracted arborist, met with Drew's facility manager, who indicated that up to ninety dead or dying trees may have to be removed. He wrongly believed that universities were exempt from Madison's tree protection ordinance. Rich was able to determine that the remaining trees slated for removal were dead and should be removed. He was not able to determine the state of the trees that had, that had already been removed. Subsequently, a tree removal permit from Drew was filed, listing sixty-five trees for removal. Most were above sixteen inches in diameter, which in Madison's ordinance is defined as significant trees. Many of the trees were in the central portion of the campus where there is limited natural nutrients for the trees to grow. For whatever reason, the trees had not been fertilized in many years. We have requested, Shade Tree Board has requested that Drew replace many of these trees with native hardwoods and fertilize the remaining trees that are in the central campus area. Else even more trees may die. So that was my update on the tree removals at Drew.
Thank you very much, Jean. Appreciate that. That's very helpful and appreciate your work. And Chris Hepburn?
So sorry. Okay, I'm muted. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Christine Hepburn. One Lightning Bug Hollow in Hardwick, New Jersey. But a formerly longtime Madison resident and talking on behalf of Drew University. I, I wanted to talk about flooding, but I'm, I'm a little, I want to say I'm a little blown away by what Jean has reported. And thank you to Jean for decades of looking after Madison's shade trees. Did, did the tree company that removed those original trees without a permit not think they had to get a permit? Anyway, I wanted to weigh in tonight just because of recent heavy rain events. I know I don't have to convince you sitting up there and I thank you very much for your resolution and your efforts and, and your desire to protect the Drew Forest for Madison and the region. But I did want to go on the record to say that of all the many reasons, worthy reasons to protect the Drew Forest, you know, stormwater runoff and flooding is a very serious one that would impact the, you know, the necessity for individuals to pay for flooded basements, for the town to play, pay for infrastructure and pumping and whatever. When I lived practically in the Drew Forest in the Zuck House, I was told many times by people who knew that I was sitting on soil that was probably two hundred feet deep glacial till from the last glacier. If I'm repeating what Sarah said, I'm sorry, my internet has gone in and out because of a thunderstorm. And I do want to attest to the fact that there was never water, even in the adjacent glacial dell left by a, a melted piece of the last Wisconsin glacier. You know, forty feet down, whatever, there was never water down there after a rain. The soil is uniquely able to absorb rainwater there. Hence it's great aquifer recharge potential, but also its ability to keep any water that falls and filters down through the trees off of our streets and out of our basements. I hear from Barbie Hughes, who now lives in the Zuck House that there now, she has seen water down in the dell because we've had such extreme rain events. But I just want to emphasize that, that the service that the forest provides in keeping, in absorbing all the, so much water that were to be developed, where even the trees to be cut down, we would have to deal with that water. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And Tom, welcome back again.
All right, three times, my lucky night. So Mayor, I just wanted to ask if it's okay that I use some of my bank time for not having attended any council meetings over the summer? Is that okay that I use those four minutes?
I, I, I just checked up the bylaws and the, the bank is closed. So you got, you got your usual four minutes.
Okay, well, I'm gonna take ten seconds and Okay, well, I'm going to take ten seconds and say happy birthday to Jim Burnett. It's a wonderful day for you to be working, Jim. I told you, you can't go to the restaurant tonight anyway, so save your celebrating later in the week. Hopefully, we'll meet you out on the boardwalk. First comment, Mayor, you didn't respond, and maybe it wasn't time for me to speak about my question regarding using. The federal COVID relief money for the radio system. So if you have a comment on that, I'd appreciate just hearing what the thirty thousand dollars applies to. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the nine eleven memorial service that was held on Saturday. Was, was very nicely organized by all of you on council, you mayor. Father George spoke, spoke very well to the, the march to the firehouse. And then the gong and everything else that went on was a great tribute to the catastrophe that happened on nine eleven. And we should never forget what went on. And I know that you all won't let us forget either. And the park looks great. So thank you very much for organizing that. The one comment is that next time we're gonna get a better PA system. So that I, I don't have to hold my hands over my ears and look like a hundred and twenty year old person who can't hear very well. But I did hear everybody and it was fantastic. The Madison Public Schools have circulated a document to all of the parent community. Regarding the schools being idle free zones. Every school is going to have signage. I don't know how they're going to enforce it, but they said they're going to do some enforcement that neither buses. Who are bringing student athletes or picking up our own students are going to idle. Parents that come to the school for any reason shouldn't be idling around the schools. And the reasons for not idling are, are very obvious to a lot of people. But there's people who don't realize what they're doing, sitting there for five minutes with either their air conditioning on their heat. I would like the borough to do the same around a lot of the public spaces in town. I had proposed this when I was on the Environmental Commission. We had a great presentation from a person who had done studies on the effects of idling and the pollution it causes. We have a lot of public areas, one that's very essential to your Hartley Dodge building is right at the train station. I think there's cars and buses and some of the commuter vans that pick up people. And they'll, they'll be sitting there for ten or fifteen minutes, idling for just the, the driver to stay comfortable. And, and it does cause a tremendous amount of pollution, also around our own sports fields. Just notifying parents through the clubs is probably not enough. We should have some very visible signage. Similar to what you had at the YMCA, Mayor, when you were there, and even now that you're gone, right at the entrance, there's multiple signs. And there's parents that wait there to pick up their students coming out of some of their activities. And the idle pollution just is very bad for all of us, and let alone obviously our children. So there's, there's ways that we have to mitigate that. I'm in front of Starbucks, wherever people are stopping. So please, somebody in town, start to address that. I'd be happy to help. I have a lot of emails that I had presented to you all many years ago. Another area that's green.
No, one, one, one minute, Tom.
Impossible.
Yep, I, I, I didn't even, I didn't even count the happy birthday time, so. And I'm not counting this time either, so one minute from now.
Real quick, one thing, another green area I'd like to address is the lack of recycling around the commercial areas in the borough. We have very few of our commercial businesses that serve food. And sell drink bottles, drink cups, food containers that have any form of recycling. The fingers have been pointed in many direction as to who fault it is. And ultimately, it's probably the borough's fault for not mandating that we have to recycle in town. It's important. We're creating so much garbage. We, we took pride in the fact that we banned plastic bags. From all of our retail establishments, and now we don't promote recycling. And we can see our garbage bins overflowing around town because most of those businesses don't have recycling. And one last area I want to address, Mayor, I hope you bring it up in the near future. I have been asking about other communities that have pickleball, paddle tennis courts. There are a lot of towns that have community courts like this, and it brings a lot of people out. Chatham, as an example, has a hundred and twenty of their students that have a paddle team. Basking Ridge has eight public paddle courts. But in addition to that pickle, I would like us to continue on with that project. It's been silent for a while. I see you looking at me, Mayor.
Yep.
Ready to cut me off. All right, I'm gonna go have a drink on, on Jim's behalf. Jim, happy birthday.
All right, thank, thank you, Tom. A couple of things to follow up on. Again, I didn't lose track of your comments on ordinance thirty-nine, that's about to be introduced, introduced. And so we will clarify that when that is introduced. I greatly appreciate your comments related to nine eleven. That was said before, a very touching ceremony and, and we shall never forget. I am with you with the idle free zones. I used to walk in front of the Y and turn my finger like that to remind people. And for the most part, it is a reminder. So you're, you're right about the, whether it's signage or other ways to get people to think about it. Just, you know, turn the car off, you're gonna stay warm enough. And if you can't stay warm enough, maybe you got to the school too early to pick up. And, you know, having your child walk a block to a, where you could get there a little bit later, it's fine also. Recycling, I think we have plans to, as far as the containers in, in town, I think we can do a better job. There should be a one-to-one garbage to recycling and we will put it, share it with Lisa. As far as communicating to all our businesses, the obligation for recycling. And pickleball, the proposals for the courts and all that, that's being worked on and may come through. It'll, if it moves forward, it'll be presented to the parks committee and, and various other committees that may have interest in it. And before we come to council. So I think I touched on all those and appreciate all your work. Any others, anyone else wishing to comment, please raise your hand now. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and we go on to introductory ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for September the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one. Will be posted in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-one for first reading. Ask the borough clerk to read said ordinance title.
Ordinance thirty, thirty-nine, twenty twenty-one, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating thirty thousand dollars. From the General Capital Improvement Fund for professional services related to the installation of a new radio system. For police, fire, ambulance, DPW and electric utility.
All right, motion?
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-one.
I second the ordinance.
And to clarify, Tom and Jim can also add, but what the, the money from ARP was moved into. We moved a portion of it into our capital or to be reserved for that, and now we have to appropriate the money. Is that a fair, a fair way or?
It, it's a little more complicated than that, Mayor. We're gonna take this as a regular general capital. We may be able to replenish that later on. Given that this is professional services for the capital item, we may end up continuing to use that as regular general capital. Use the American Rescue Plan Fund, the actual installation of the project. As council reserved one point five million, we think it's gonna be about two million dollars.
All right, so which, yeah, very important, and we didn't, we're not covering a hundred percent through the. The money from the federal government, so. Any other questions or comments? We'll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich? Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
All right, okay, we move on to consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
The consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
You're muted, Maureen.
Sorry, Mayor, I move resolution two thirty dash twenty twenty-one, the resolution two forty-six dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Any council discussion or any that need to be pulled?
I, I will be abstaining on R two four four.
Yes. All right, we'll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, to all abstain, R two four four.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich? Mr. Landrigan?
That was a yes. We got a yes there too. And for the public knowledge, R two four four is the contract with Montana Construction. Which is on the storm sewer repairs, which was done on an emergency basis. That was the overt belonging to the borough, but it's an easement across the YMCA, which Austria Bailey serves on the board for. And there is no unfinished business. Approval vouchers. Will clerk please read the voucher totals?
Yes, for the current fund, four million ninety-three thousand sixty-five dollars fifty-four cents. For the general capital fund, eight hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred and twenty-three dollars thirty-four cents. For the electric fund, eight hundred eighty-one thousand eight ninety-two dollars and twelve cents. For the water operator, sixty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty, eighty-one cents. Water capital fund, forty-nine thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars fifty cents. And for the trust, three hundred and fifty-three thousand four hundred dollars and forty-two cents. The total is six million three hundred and thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents.
Mayor, I move most approval of the vouchers.
Again.
Any discussion or questions? We'll call vote, please.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrlich?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
All right, there is no new business. Mr. Landrigan?
Mayor, remove that weed jar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone be careful out there. I know we, the good reason to be virtual is most of us don't have to go out in the storm right now. And the big, we're already home, so be well.